Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the mean to order. It is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the state, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any minutes or reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the county clerk's February 2025 fee and the sheriff's February 2025 fee.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I wanna make an announcement. If you haven't heard already, that Lincoln University has won two of the GLBC championships in the past two weeks. They've won the men's indoor track and field, and then their basketball team won the championship Sunday, so that's quite an accomplishment. I know they've got a good track team usually anyway, but I want to recognize both of those. We've got a meeting today on senior tax. We're still working on that application, trying to get things ready to go, bring to the commission for approval. It's Fair Housing Month, and I've got a poster checking contacts at the board of shareholders, HBA board meeting this afternoon, planning commission meeting tonight. We've got a remodel pre-bid at the Brazil EMS substation. HBA general membership meeting is Wednesday night. All the way to Sycamore District meeting Thursday. Is there a chief's meeting Thursday?
Uh, no, not this month.
Nope, not this month, okay, thank you. We've got a Renegade's Coffee Friday morning, and Fish Fries, St. Thomas, and now it's Friday night. There's probably some other ones.
Hawaii as counsel.
And then Landlord's not here, but his birthday's Sunday, so we may well have to recognize that on Tuesday. He skipped that on purpose? Yeah, okay.
I have a meeting with the JC rep folks tomorrow, also on Wednesday is Salute 25. Thursday is a city public works meeting, and I'll remind you of safety net meeting on my calendar.
Okay. I'm good until Thursday. We have the homeless task force meeting, and then the Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption is doing a ribbon cutting at 2:00, so I'll be at that. And then Saturday, Christie and Health Department, myself, we're gonna be on Hal Dooley's Kwas program. And at 2:00 PM is a St. Patty's break at Patty Blone's. So, that is all I have. Okay. Any commission comments? Okay, we're gonna deviate from our agenda a little bit, and we're gonna move the salary discussion for the prosecuting attorney first, since she has to be somewhere else at 10:00. So if you'd wanna come sit up here.
Thanks.
This is the only microphone.
Thank you for taking me out of turn. I know that Locke Thompson has submitted salary increases for our department, and what we have requested is based upon, he has a salary structure scheduled for assistant prosecutors and for legal assistants. And so it would be moving Megan Edgell, who is a legal assistant, from a legal assistant one to two, based upon the number of years that she has and also her performance. He's also requested a salary increase for myself, which would also be based upon the time that, the experience that I have, and I believe also, I believe that he's doing it based upon my performance. The legal assistant position right now, or the prosecuting position that I would be moving to is one that has a minimum of seven years' experience. I have 19 years' experience, and so I think that, I think it's warranted, I think that I've performed well, and Megan Edgell has performed well also, and so it's very important to me that first be approved. Everything that we have requested is fully covered by the amount that's been allocated to us from the state of Missouri, since they reimburse the county for our expenses, and so it's all fully covered. It wouldn't come out of the county money, it would completely be reimbursed by the state.
Is this under the child?
The child support, yes.
Yes, okay.
And so the reason that, it's different than the prosecutor's, since we're covered by the state.
Right. And I think Locke meant to bring this up at his other presentation, because immediately after that, he sent me an email, he said, "Oh my, I forgot."
Yeah.
So, we knew, kinda knew this was coming.
Okay. You guys have any questions for me?
I'm good.
No, I have a topic to be in, this one is covered by the state. Brings the other salaries in line with some of the prosecutor's office.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you all very much for taking me up.
There was a motion.
Oh, let me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed balance of prosecutor's office compensation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Don't speed, don't speed.
I won't, I won't.
Drive, drive, care.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will go back to our regular agenda, and we have bids and contracts, and the approval and signing of the non-company appraisal contract for 2025. And I apologize, we thought we had, we thought we had done this, we hadn't. So I do apologize, Chris.
That's all right. Jill got the email back to me, I think, before you even saw yours.
Yeah.
Let's use your standard copy that we, for standard contract that we've had every year with non-company Bob Dorson. Been doing a great job for us, and we're looking to renew for 2025.
And Chris, just to let the public know, this is for commercial.
Commercial, that is correct.
Appraisal, not residential.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the non-company appraisal services contract for 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, approval of quote for purchase of the robotic total station. That sounds really cryptic. Are you a robot?
No, sir.
Okay, just checking. Well, you get those when you're doing those, and they say, "Are you a..."
You didn't look up what a GT605 is and does?
No, I did not. Go ahead.
Robotic total station is an optical surveying instrument that uses robotics to automate the positioning and aiming of the device. This allows for faster and more accurate measurements than manual operation, and we would use this in conjunction with the GPS rover that we currently have. This quote includes the instrument, prism pole, bipod, tripod, and robotic module, and we do have this in our budget for this year, so. I just need approval to go ahead and purchase this.
Is this a dollar amount?
Uh, $22,992.3, and that does include one day of onsite training for the guys. Yes, it's, they have a modi contract.
Yeah, I was looking it up, I love the price we got for it, too. It's like $18,000, GT605 robotic.
What you said, 22, nine, 22.
Well, there are other things included in with the.
That's the tripod, the module, and some of the maintenance.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for the purchase of robotic total station, the optical survey equipment at $22,992.03.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of supplemental agreement number two for engineering services for the Wildwood Drive Extension.
So this agreement would be with Central Missouri Professional Services for a total of $33,901.58. The, it's additional construction phase engineering services necessary for the completion of the project, and these services include Amarin electric support, media com fiber relocation, construction contract administration, and rock point.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement number two for engineering services for Wildwood Drive Extension in an amount of $33,901.58.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we will go to bid award, bid award of 2025-04 for road materials.
We had five vendors submit a response for the road materials, and these are the ones that we recommend to do the lowest and best, near the work site with available material.
Did that come across on either?
Yeah.
What's the date of that?
Last week sometime.
From you.
You had five. You had a bunch of items.
Oh, I remember.
We'll get then, we'll make a motion to approve bid award of road materials to the lowest and best available.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award of 2025-05 for blades.
When we had four vendors submit a response for the blades, our recommendation is to award the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Do award the blades to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bid award of 2025-06 mosquito spray materials.
We had two vendors submit a response for the mosquito spray. Our recommendation is to award the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Do award the mosquito spray materials to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award of 2025-07 vegetation spray materials.
For the vegetation spray materials, we had four vendors submit a response, and our recommendation is to award the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Motion to award the vegetation spray materials to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award of 2025-08 leased equipment.
We had two vendors submit a response for leased equipment. Our recommendation is to award the lowest and best bid in each category with available equipment.
Motion to award the leased equipment to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award of 2025-09 cold milling and asphalt paving services.
We had one vendor submit a response, which was Jefferson Asphalt, and so our recommendation is to award it to Jefferson Asphalt.
Motion to award the cold milling and asphalt paving services to Jefferson Asphalt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bid award of 2025-10 signed materials.
We had five vendors submit a response for the signed materials. Our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Motion to award the signed materials to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award of 2025-11 asphalt materials.
We had four vendors submit a response for the asphalt materials. Our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Motion to award the asphalt materials to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, last but not least, bid award of 2025-12 for pipes.
We had three vendors submit a response, and our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Motion to award pipes to the lowest and best available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of an MOU with the JCPD for EMT student clinical observation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a MOU that will allow our upcoming EMT students to do a clinical rotation with community resource officer at JCPD, focusing specifically on crisis intervention, mental health, and socioeconomic issues in our communities. So, you know, as we continue to see those issues bleed over into our operations, I think it's important that we give our folks some exposure to that in their initial training, so.
Does this say one-year contract?
I think it's an ongoing, open-ended, because there is no monetary, there is no monetary exchange, it's just either party may terminate within 30 days written on it.
There's no cost?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the MOU with JCPD for EMT student clinical observation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Signing of engagement letter with Williams Keepers LLC CPAs for upcoming financial audit. That's sure goes fast.
Yeah. This is the standard engagement letter. It outlines both auditor's responsibility and our responsibilities related to the audit. It also includes the cost of the audit, which is the amount that's in their five-year proposal. I mean, that amount doesn't change. $61,425 for the financial statement audit, and $5,000 for the single audit, which includes one major program, that'll be ARPA, but they might have to also audit the EMS building CDBG grant, too, so that might add another, I'm thinking that's gonna add another $5,000 to the cost, so. I sent that to you, it's all, it's a long document, but it's all pretty well standard wording, I know Harry's familiar with that.
Where are we in the five-year cycle there?
This is the second year.
Second year.
It's just the second year, yeah. And I just need your approval and Sam's, Sam's signature.
I'll make a motion to sign the engagement letter with Williams Keepers for the upcoming audit, and potentially two single audits in addition to the regular financial statement audit.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
They will be onsite in two different weeks, one in April, they skip a week, and then the last week here, I think it's the last week, April includes May, April and May, so. Then the final report is issued by the end of June, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, new business, accounts payable review?
We won't have any this week.
Okay.
Not, not?
No.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number one.
This is for $271,950, and this is for a sales tax project with Public Works. It's for additional money they're gonna receive, so I do need action to change the budget.
I'll make a motion to sign the court order, budget adjustment number one, with a total number of $2,71,950.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, salary discussion for county employee.
Well, I did ask you guys to put this one on there. We did in the commission in the office miss an employee that should have been considered with the other two employees that were considered, and that is our purchasing agent. She is not a department head, she is under the commission, under me, under the commission, so I would like you guys to consider that salary to also get the 5.5. And we have, you know, got it updated, I'd say job description, and so, and it was one that was asked for at budget time.
I'm good. I'll make a motion to honor the request from the finance director for a 5.5% increase salary for the purchasing agent.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Salary study discussion.
Okay, well, I asked to put this back on the agenda in light of the parade of people that have been coming through, asking for additional salaries after the budget was approved. Also, we've talked about it for years, having salaries that are done, to give us some basis to help you, to help the auditor with the budget at the beginning of the year. We have five different funds, basically that payroll comes out of, and in those five different, I'm sorry, in those five different funds, close to 80% of their budget has to do with salaries or benefits, so it's a very important item. It would take the responsibility more off if you guys have a document to rely on, not just each person coming in here or each department head coming in. The city had one done about two years ago, and you can tailor it however you want, but their cost was, I think, around $70,000 to $80,000. So we would just like the opportunity to bid that out, get your blessing to bid that out, to see what's available and how much it would cost the county. You guys approved two weeks ago a study for the 911 communication center. I get it, very important, but we do believe the salary issue is very important, and it's a big majority of our budget here, so I think it's very important, but we have a document to rely on. You guys can.
I know you've been on me about this for, I don't know how many years. Problem is, when I came in, 60, 70 years ago, they had the Archer study. It was used as kind of a guidance document, but when the salary study got finished, we were not able to financially implement everything and get everything where it's supposed to be. I thought it was actually kind of good to use as a, oh, guidance document, as I said, but then we didn't have buy-in from everybody, and I know people would come in, and if you wrote a new job description, a lot of times your clerk may get more money than the clerk across from them that may be doing kind of the same thing, but different. So, I think if we're gonna do this with all the salary discussion that we have, it may be time to public it, say maybe we need to do this, as much as I hate to. I just think we need to have buy-in, and I'm not exactly sure how we guarantee that from all the other elected officials, because they're the ones that are gonna have to comply with it, have work all this, I know we got several of them in here, I don't know what your thoughts are on it, even on the salary study gets done, are we gonna be able to bring everybody up to what it says, or are we bringing people down to what it says? There's a lot of different parts to it. I'm not against it, I think we just gotta get a plan.
I, if you had made that as a motion, I would have seconded it.
I agree.
I will say, the initial step of looking to bid it out is the preliminary step, we can always stop it if we get back crazy things, and we don't need buy-in to take the first step, but at some point, before we pull the trigger and agree to spend money, we have to have some assurances, like you say, of the elected officials that, and I'm not sure how we get that, because they're all elected by the citizens of Coal, and that's who they answer to, not necessarily the, the salary state, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, and then you can have everybody that's elected right now, in two to four years, we can have some completely different.
Hundred percent turnover, that's right.
There's just gotta be a way for us to try to give it some teeth or claws that can target everybody, and I know the elected officials, and I'm speaking for you right now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but y'all are kind of part of it, too, they're having to come up here and fire for their people, and it's kind of the back and forth game, and worried about, you know, stealing from each other, employees across the hall or the next building, so if y'all have anything you necessarily want to add to it, I think we can probably put it out to bid, like you said, make take that first step.
I think it's time.
And, and you're right, the Archer study that we did, it was hard, we couldn't implement it, it took us two or three years to implement it, and by then, then we didn't keep up with the Coalas that were happening. But it was, it was a useful document for quite a few years, and I know we did have elected officials sign a document saying they were willing to work with it, willing to use it, but then again, if you have changes in depart, elected officials, it becomes difficult to keep that going, but you do get the majority of your own employees in this study, too, and you definitely control them, so.
I'm looking for EMS, and they've kind of got a program for theirs.
And that can be discussed, as far as what departments you want to include in here or not?
Works as a career path.
Yeah, there's steps and everything.
Maybe doing, doing a tiered bid, so maybe we could include some of them if we don't.
We could do that, we could do that, as far as, you know, bid it out as, you know, include them all, just include these departments, you know, we could do that, too. But we would like some consistency, and I'm sure you guys would, too, we'd like some consistency across the whole county.
I guess what I was talking about with these other departments, maybe carving them out, but that's not where it's as much disparity, because they have different specializations that they have, just kind of way out of there. You exclude them as well, but.
I think initially it's global, you know, and you can always pare back, and for one reason or another, say, "Look, Department X is unique, and therefore it doesn't fall under the global," but we'll wait till we get there, but initially, I think we start with a global outlook for a county employee's salary study.
Yes.
Exclusive of elected officials, by the way.
You know, we're talking about buy-in from elected officials, I think after our last meeting, or the dirty half dozen, as Harry referred to, Jeff had expressed interest for the first time I'd ever heard of the salary study, so I quickly got him on the phone this, that afternoon, and subsequent, and also talked to Harry, didn't have a chance to talk with you, Sam, but the idea Jeff and I had to talk about was to have a letter, we did call it memorandum of understanding, but something in writing from elected officials that expressed support in the salary study, and would commit to the outcome of the study, its implications for their employees. And so, what I did was I talked to about half a dozen elected officials, just preliminarily, to see if they would be interested in putting a letter like that together and presenting it to the commission, and I got positives from everyone. I think there was, there was one lukewarm, lukewarm response, which in effect was, I'm not opposed to it, but everybody seemed supportive of the study, seemed supportive of the idea of submitting something in writing that would move the project along, it sounds like we all are already well along anyway. So I just, I wanted, I think there were a couple of concerns, which I can express very quickly. Elected officials had said that if they picked something in writing saying they supported the salary study outcome, let's call it, that they would wonder, they would wonder what would happen when their successors came, after they left off. One would hope you all, your successors would understand, maybe who follows in our footsteps may not be as committed as you were, and it was that concern, and there were a few other concerns, but by and large, I think if it was supportive, and they'd be happy to sign the letter saying they would hold on to the outcome, assuming this is Assuming, and this is one very important, but no, assuming that they had a role to play in the salary study itself, that the job descriptions, that they would have some sort of say in writing them or signing off on the content of the job descriptions, things like that. I think they're supportive if they can be a part of the process without it being disruptive.
And I think Eric was here the last time we did the Archer study, too, because we did have a committee, once it got going, and it was a committee that stayed involved with that vendor that was chosen throughout the whole process, which helped then that the elected officials and other people know what, how they came up with what they did. So it was, it was definitely handled very professionally.
The one, the one other thing I'd say that I think is important for all of us is that there was a concern about signing on to a letter indicating that we could support the outcome of the study, of what would happen in two or three or four years. If market forces change, as sometimes even internally, job descriptions might change. The question, would the commission conversely commit to updating the salary study in two or three years to keep it current, to keep it useful? So that was a concern. Don't have to answer me, it was just a concern.
I was the one lukewarm, I confess. My concern, and I had experience with the Archer study, because it was in place when I first came, was my concern, again, is in job descriptions, that I found it was very, they were very uneven and unfairly judged. In my case, I had three employees I put in raises for. I gave a job description for one of them, because I didn't think they were capable of doing that. The other two wrote their own, and one I wrote got through, the other two got denied by some third party out there that really has no idea what happens in my office. They're just reading the description and making determinations based on what they're reading. I'm not sure that's a fair way to determine if somebody deserves a raise. I'm in favor of moving forward with the study, but I think there needs to be some checks and balances on who writes the job descriptions, and even after that, who judges whether somebody's entitled to a raise or not, somebody that's sitting off in some big city somewhere and just reading it and saying, oh, I deserve a raise.
And to that point, when the Archer came in, they did go to particular employees, they did not go to all of our employees, they picked certain employees with different types of job titles, and then interviewed them, and then they wrote the job description. What Larry's talking about, we were four or five years down the road with Archer. I could, we could still use them to write our job descriptions and to review some of the market stuff, but they weren't here, right, they didn't really come and interview, they didn't do all that. But we would make sure this next company has the ability to come back if we need them to. I mean, as long as that company's still in business, you know.
I'm sorry, I will make the commitment to assist in writing the job descriptions for uniformity and some of that, and you send to the elected officials.
And we really need that uniformity.
Excuse me, elected officials should at least approve every job, I mean.
Yeah.
Can't have your employees submitting it up without you reviewing it, approving it, and editing it, I mean, that's.
They didn't really write them.
I don't understand what happened back then, but I would've, I would've written them all myself.
Well, they did write them all themselves, they gave the, every employee a questionnaire, and the questionnaire was, you know, like, six or eight pages long, and from that questionnaire, they wrote the job description, and they gave it back to the department heads or elected officials to review at the time. But when we were trying to keep up with it, four or five years later, it probably wasn't the same, you know, but yes.
And Archer reviewed it?
Yes, they reviewed them as things came in.
And then some of it, write it a little better, and then it come back, and if there'd be some kind of adjustment. Now, there may be some added duties, and that makes sense, but just because you went and made it, you know, prettier, now you've got to make more money.
Well, in everybody's job description, as electronic stuff becomes more available, some stuff drops off, and other new tasks come in, that doesn't automatically mean that there's a salary adjustment that has to be made, because additional duties, because other stuff got easy, and now we've added different stuff to your, like, you know.
I'm not, I'm still not crazy about it, but I think this is an opportunity to maybe to put another piece of fairness in there, so. And sometimes it's very subjective.
It is.
If we have this, gives us something to go bat on, I still have a problem with, I'm not saying anybody in this room, but we've had people that, an employee leaves, and maybe they've been here for 20 or 30 years, they've had cold raises, they're way above what that should be. Well, they bring their new person in, and they bring them in at that same rate, instead of the starting spot, and there's, sometimes there's been arguments when they were qualified at the root. We can't even stop that, I may have thought we looked at it.
You could, through the budget process, you control.
But when it happens in the middle of the year, and then you're gonna reduce.
And I'm fine at the end of the year, tell them that.
Well, next year, you drop their budget down, tell them.
It's gonna, you're gonna reduce our salary back at the start of the year, so how's that gonna work?
Well, you control budget, so, but whatever. My two points, it would sure help the budget officer tremendously if we had this in place. And that was my second.
Larry.
And that was my second point, you said, well, how are we gonna get the elected officials to enforce it? You controlled the budget, you controlled the budget. Now, you can't necessarily stop them from, oh, I'm gonna give my chief deputy more, and I'm gonna take that away from what it says, my lowest deputy should be, well, that's on that, that's on us, though. But you, you would give them, you would give them.
The salary study, that should control it.
Right, but legally, you can't necessarily stop that, but you can, you would only give them the total amount of money that they should be getting, I mean, you can, you have, you have a lot of control of that.
That's why I'm so hesitant in doing it, because I don't know, it's exercise, and, you know, in four years, it may be.
We have an HR person, too, which is, we did not have.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think, I think that will make a big difference, yeah, so. Sheila!
Sir?
You're gonna have more power!
Sheila don't have any power, but really, I mean, she gets the information.
I know, and she does, yes.
We've got to disseminate and make a decision, and it's not Sheila's fault, she doesn't do it best. Just worry about the note, she's not the one, not the first string of information.
But I do think you've got a group of elected officials that are, that are willing to support, support this, and.
Well, we need to, if we do this, spend the money, and it's not supported, then.
And you'll get the majority of the employees under this.
I will want to interject, one note of caution, that kind of falls along with the auditor's comments, is we can, we can put together this beautiful budget of spending money, but then we have to look at, what's the revenue side for the county? And with some of the, I'll use the term hilarious ideas that are being brought to the Capitol over here, one of which is, take the sales tax off of food, and how that impacts the revenue, sales tax revenue of political subdivisions, counties, cities, and so on, would cost this county. I think the number, is it four million?
Four million.
Yeah, that was the printout, we got it.
Now, maybe it's such a hilarious or crazy idea, it's not gonna go anywhere, but if something dramatic like that happened to the revenue sources for the county, it didn't matter how much we liked our budget, it's gotta get pared back, potentially. So just a, just a note of caution, even we've got this plan, we've got this beautiful study, and it shows this, this growth of expenses for salaries, and people are just loving it, and the commission comes along and says, guess what, we don't have the revenue to fund it.
I think it was closer to five billion, really, if you look at.
And again, I don't know if that number's coming up. That's a whole other discussion, but that doesn't sound like it.
Mac, CCM, they gave, they gave it out, and I don't know.
That's how much it costs us if.
Four million, eight hundred and some thousand, I think, is what.
Out of 25.6 million a year that we give in the free sales taxes, plus or minus, that much of the free sales tax.
Well, they, you know, they've got fiscal analysts at the Capitol that said, this is what it's gonna cost the state. If it takes it out of the sales tax base for the state, it takes it out of the sales tax base for municipalities and counties, and they do some rate calculations, and come up with, it may not be potentially perfectly accurate, but it's enough, but some of the smaller counties around here, it would wipe them out, because they would never have a, they never, they couldn't gravel their roads, they couldn't pave their road.
I think we're kind of straying a little bit.
But we're straining, but I just wanted to interject that, hey, even if we all have a beautiful plan of how we reward our employees and fairly compensate them, there can be interruptions.
Most definitely, even the benefits, the benefits are gonna keep going up, and if you wanna stay with the benefits versus salaries, it's all in there together. But yes, the budgets have to balance.
Any discussions I had with elected officials, I reminded them that this is not a, this is not a pay raise program, that this salary study, and they all understood that, that this is not an effort to get more money. This is an effort to equalize, and it's difficult to take out the relatives of people that are in the middle of the year. It has nothing to do with pay rates.
Yeah, it would help me, it would keep us from, you continuously.
So let's begin, let's just, let's just.
So do I have a motion to go ahead and bid, to bid a salary study?
Yeah.
Second.
Any others?
So, do we want to, who's gonna write the RFP for that, do we want to have a group together for that?
We can do that, we can work with Jessica on that, you know, she has the city's one and a couple other ones as examples of bidding this out.
Well, I think let's do that before we get the proposals, so, you know, how we wanna get instead of get it, and then go, well, we should've done it this way.
Well, sure, she'll start, and then we'll start.
I amended to authorize the finance director to draft a RFP, which will be brought back to the commission for approval.
So I'll make that amendment.
And I'll second your amendment.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our reporter had a question.
Yeah, I've got a question for all the elected officials in here. What's the reasoning for allowing Cole County employees to write their job descriptions? It's commonplace in your department, and if, like Jeff said, if it suggests that an employee would have their salary lowered, I mean, is that something, is that a realistic expectation that you'll have, and is that something that you'd always commit to?
It is common that incumbents in a position assist with writing the job description. No one knows a better way to do it, as far as the tasks they do, the expectations of the role, the potential for growth in that role, so yes, it is common that an incumbent would be intimately involved in writing a job description, but the supervising director, elected official, whatever, would ultimately be the one to sign off on it and say, yes, this is my expectation. And to get the salary study we're done, and it indicated that we were overpaying certain positions, it's my belief that they would reasonably become stagnant in raises, and so we are back within the parameters of those positions as described. And if we're way out of line, we need to look at what tasks we add to those people instead of adding people to our roster. I mean, it's a, it's an intricate dance.
Do you expect that you would have Turner, I mean, I don't expect him to be like NFL free agency, he's working, willing to take a pay cut, stay in the job.
Most people wouldn't be willing to take a pay cut, but when you look at our benefit structure and the other things that go into our compensation package, most county employees, not all, but most county employees would agree that, that we're in a pretty good position salary-wise in most cases, I think.
I don't think by taking a pay cut, I mean, actually probably see us going in and asking them, but I think the problem would occur when this person over here, maybe compared to the salary studies, is making more, and then you have to hire another person at that same level, making a lot less, it could cause some issues, so.
And we're not talking about cutting, we're talking about freezing, basically, if that was an issue.
Yeah, I made the comment about if it came down less, would you have to take less? I don't think that's gonna be the case.
Did that answer your question?
And, and, yes, I understand, an employee's gonna know probably best what he or she does on a basis, in the private sector, in terms of, I've never got to, I've never seen an employee necessarily write their own job description, but at least with the approval of those supervisors.
Yeah, yeah, no, there would be no final phase of just by being incumbent in the position. They would have to be the one supervising them that ultimately suggested.
In my case, I was just a newly appointed collective, so I had to write it and review, except for the one that I wrote myself. And again, I thought maybe they're, at that time, they certainly did their jobs, because they've been at them for years, a lot better than I have, I don't think in an office, I don't think a year.
Yeah, I'm not implying, I'm just saying that if I got to write my job description, I'd be second coming in, right?
I'm gonna miss you, Nick.
Okay, we've got all the, we voted on.
We did.
Okay, and we're fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've just breezed through that, do we have any other unfinished business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: real estate under Section 610.021 Subsection 2, and personnel issues under Section 610.021 Subsection 13. Second.
Throw a call, please. Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.